Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator, controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, its life well-run.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the first day of Slippery Roads and Construction in one big fun combination. So we're starting a little late today, but I want to welcome everyone to the Kent County Board of Commissioners meeting for today's date, November 7th. Calling the meeting to order slowly. Everyone's getting seated. All right. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Good morning. Commissioners, what is...
Here.
Here.
Present.
Vonck.
Here.
Tallon.
Here.
Vice Chair Steck.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Present.
Skaggs.
Here.
Saulfeld.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Melton.
Present.
Coleman.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Bolkowski.
Present.
Brevi.
I'm here.
Antor.
Here.
Chair Bolter.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have 18 members present, one absent. You have a quorum. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will call on Commissioner Womack for the invocation today.
Well, I want to say hello to our fellow citizens and of course, all of our fellow commissioners and our Kent County staff. And every time I do invocation, I always thank all the other commissioners for their help. And today, I was so busy getting ready for this, I got off on the second floor, but Matt Coleman and Phil Skaggs especially pulled me back in on the right floor. So I said, "That proves that we do help each other." And upon my becoming a commissioner, being a voice for my community, I also didn't know at the time that I ran, I would also become a voice for Kent County government, because relationships goes both ways. And I've had a chance to learn a lot of the services that are here. Not that I did not study those before I ran for office, but to actually meet the department heads and then see some of the hard work the staff does, and see resources that can help my community. It's just been a gift to also be a voice for Kent County to let the community know of the services and resources that are here. And recently, I had somebody ask me, like, "With all that's going on in American news about politics and the government, how can you, you know, be a part of the government?" I said, "I'm proud to be a part of this government because I've traveled." And when you travel, you might not notice, but you can go to a lot of countries where there's only one culture. And if there's two cultures, and we say war here, our wars are verbal and philosophy and voting and democracy. But even if you have two cultures in other countries, a lot of those wars are still going on with bombs, suicide bombers, terrorist people fighting. If you come back to America and you say, "We don't have two cultures. We have thousands of cultures in one country." A country that has changed and was outlined on how we would change. We've changed our constitution to include all people, and we're not fully done, but we are the generation that can continue to change that. And I told those young men, I said, "When this flag was fighting the rebel flag, that's why I'm proud to stand behind this flag. When this flag was fighting the Nazi flag, if it had lost, just imagine. That's why I'm proud to stand behind this flag of the United States of America." And I say that because when you pledge allegiance to the flag, just remember all this flag has went through, for better or for worse. Thank you for joining me in saying the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Womack. We are on to item 5, Special Order of Business. And our first Special Order of Business is our budget hearing. And I will call on Wayman Britt.
Good morning. Time here. Commissioners and the public, we're here to present the 2020 proposed budget. And I'm very thankful that we've gotten through it. And we're nearing the end of our process. The 2020 proposed budget exemplifies the county's mission and was developed with the Board's strategic priorities in mind. And the proposed budget adheres to sound fiscal management. It supports Board policies and the economic prosperity of the county. It invests 3.1 million for future capital projects and reduces the amount of debt required to do so. It allocates 8.8 million for CIP, capital improvement projects, to serve the needs of the growing community. It includes 2.5 million for contributions to The Right Place and Experience Grand Rapids for future economic development. It adds a part-time agricultural preservation specialist to in-source staffing for the agricultural preservation program. It also includes funding to research a transfer of development rights program. And the proposed budget is structurally balanced and deposits $2 million to the general fund fund balance to stay in compliance with Board policy. The proposed budget continues the county's commitment to a high quality of life. It includes five additional sheriff deputy positions to decrease response times in northern Kent County. Now, these five positions are actually one position, because we're talking about 24/7, 365 days of the year service. It's really one position with five officers operating 24/7. It invests $6 million and ready by five millage funding for early childhood development While maintaining the county's commitment to the prevention initiative and the Kent School Services Network, we also continue our commitment to support the discretionary unmet needs program that provides significant support to our community's homeless services programs and the county's guardianship program. In 2020, the senior millage program will surpass $12 million. That's a high mark. Kent County continues to be a leader across the state in providing quality services to support our seniors. It allocates $500,000 to address emergency public concerns and invests, it invests $1.6 million to enhance parks and trails to improve recreation and leisure opportunities in Kent The proposed budget invests in services to improve efficiency and to improve excellence customer service to the citizens of Kent County. It includes three additional circuit court clerk positions to oversee file management and improve customer service. It includes funding to create a community health strategy position, which will support the work of the Population Health Consortium, a new collaborative between the county, our health care systems, universities, nonprofit organizations, and other stakeholders to improve health outcomes for our citizens. It sets aside $400,000 to improve IT security. Very important. It includes funding to expand the very successful Kent County Health Department internship program. This will be throughout the county, not just the Health Department, to help grow our talent pipeline and to increase innovation. And we're making a one-time commitment of $388,000 to our management pay plan step system to bring wages to market rate and retain our top talent. The proposed budget provides funding to engage and involve residents in county government. It includes funds to master plan up to four parks throughout the county in the Lowell, Alpine Sparta, and Caledonia areas. It provides funding to update the county's Community Development Block Grant Comprehensive Plan, which drives future funding decisions. It includes funding for future allocation to the North County Campus Development to serve residents in a growing part of the county. And it includes funding to enhance the county's hiring practices by implanting the Higher Reach Program to expand the diversity of our hiring pool. The proposed budget invests in the Board's priority of effective communication. It includes a communication specialist position to help us more effectively handle social media and to proactively engage the public. It sets aside funding to initiate a county branding process, which will include an update of the county website. And it maintains support for an annual State of the County, which we have received numerous positive comments from our stakeholders since its launch this past year. Economic conditions in Kent County are very healthy. Unemployment is currently higher than it was in 2018, but is still well below historical averages, and it remains lower than the state and the U.S. as a whole. Grand Rapids and Kent County have been recognized and ranked nationally for its job growth and economic growth. Home prices are up 8% over the prior year. For comparison, home prices are up 2.7% on the national level. Grand Rapids has been ranked nationally for its health, healthy real estate market, affordable housing, and recognized as the best place to live in the United States. Inflation rates are relatively low and have been since the recession. This is great for economic growth, but it's somewhat of a double-edged sword as it does stunt growth of taxable value, of value due to Proposal A and millage rates due to the Headley Amendment. State equalized value is up 8.74% in 2019. This is evidence that the real estate market in Kent County is very healthy. This is the fastest rate of growth in SEV since 1999 and the third fastest since the start of Proposition A, Proposal A. State taxable value was up 5.81% in 2019, and we're seeing growth in taxable value despite low inflation, low inflation rates and Proposal A. This is due to new development and taxable value on cappings on existing parcel turnover. State taxable value was 82.1% of SEV in 2019. As you can see by this chart, the gap between SEV and state taxable value is the largest since the start of Proposal A. This is caused by low inflation rates and Proposal A, as mentioned previously. General fund resources are projected to grow 9.3 million or 5.1% from $180.6 million to, in 2019, to 189.9 million in 2020. As we can see in this chart, revenue was flat for several years after the end of the recession. And Kent County has since grown out of the recession, as we've seen in revenue growth since 2016, driven by the growth in property tax revenue. As mentioned previously, this growth is due to the economic conditions in Kent County: low unemployment, a healthy real estate market, and new development. Now, this revenue growth is welcome, but we need to keep in mind that we are still making up for the years of cutting services, limiting investments in new technology, and reducing our employment count. The county has many needs to address: capital maintenance, IT infrastructure, and keeping up with the demands of a growing population. This slide graphically displays the breakdown of where the resources go by functional area. As you can see, approximately 50% of the total budget goes to public safety and social services. The budget has grown by only 16 positions, bringing total positions to just shy of 1,790 Another caveat, just saying, we have, I think, done a well of a job managing our headcount. And thanks to the Board and staff for their due diligence and making it happen. What's on the horizon? Between revenue sharing and funding for indigent defense, along with other funding relationships for mental health, child welfare services, public health, road patrol, and corrections, we need to improve and strengthen our relationship with the State of Michigan. We need also to wrap up our infrastructure planning and move forward. State Court Administrator's Office, SCIO, is expected to announce the need for at least two additional judgeships in Kent County. Determining our response to this will be very critical. We are very concerned also about the public health impact of lead and PFAS in Kent County. In 2020, we will develop an organized front and take leaders, a leadership role to educate the public, work with governmental units, to prevent and address and invest in remediation and abatement. While property taxes increases are being capped by Proposal A, millage rates are being rolled back due to the Headley Amendment. And the county's general operating millage may be rolled back again for 2020, impacting property tax revenues. We know that there are competing demands for county support such as park resources, judgeships, PDR funding, Network 180 behavioral health, crisis system, Calder Plaza improvement, convention hotel, sustainable business park, airport expansion. The list could go on and on. These are all very important. However, the county must continue to be judicious and prudent in its decisions that we make when considering all of these competing demands. And next on the horizon will be that the Board of Commissioners will act on the proposed budget on November 21st at 8:30 a.m. here in the Kent County Boardroom. And the budget is available, will be available on Assets Kent Online for the public to view. Thank you to the Board of Commissioners for your due diligence and for all of the work sessions. Shout out to Commissioner Diane Jones for having the three work sessions, for my Board Chair, Mandy Bolter, for her pushing us to be transparent and to remain vigilant, and for all of the Commissioners for your support in this past year's budget cycle. Very appreciative, thank you very much. And thank you to staff, especially, I want to give a shout out to our department directors for their hard work in developing the budget and the budget review teams, and for the time and due diligence that the Fiscal Services staff put into this for coordinating the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wayman. Pursuant to Standing Rule 2.3, we need a motion to open this for a public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Shall move.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Steck, support by, sorry, I didn't hear that. Who seconded?
Sparks.
Commissioner Sparks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We're declaring an open public hearing for the budget. Do we have anyone here for public comment today? We have three minutes for public comment on the budget. All right. Seeing no further public comments, I will ask for a second motion to close the public hearing regarding the budget. I move per Standing Rule 2.3 to close the public hearing on the 2020 Kent County budget. Support. Moved by Commissioner Jones, support by Commissioner Brevi. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. All right. We are on to item 5B, Experience Grand Rapids. Call up Doug Small.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I want to thank you also for, each and every one of you, for your commitment to not just our organization, but the tourism industry as a whole in Kent County. I think you're going to see here in our presentation today that your investment and trust in us is, has been well-spent and has helped building the tax base, certainly the excise lodging tax. But when you see the growth in the hotel community, which is both exciting and scary at the same time, property taxes also. So we'll try to get through this. Mike warned me not to get into any of his time, so we'll move along very quickly so we can get to sports. Our mission, you know, it's, there's a lot of words, oops, it moved on me, a lot of words, but quite simply, drive visitors here, fill hotel rooms. If we do that, economic development will happen, and much beyond even the hotel community. The, all right, guys. Our team that does the work for you, 31 full-timers, 15 part-timers. The 15 part-timers are the visitor service folks at the airport. We are in a contract with, I'm sorry. First time. 15 part-timers are at the airport. We have a contract with the Gerald R. Ford International Airport to provide that service. And for those of you that fly in and out of there, hopefully you see our folks running around in the green jackets and doing their job. Speaking of team, we have our leadership team and my coordinator with us today, Janet, Tom, Kim, Dan, Angela, and Abby. You're going to hear from Angela and Janet in a little bit, but these guys go at it every day. They lead wonderful teams and are great stewards of your investment. Strategic plan, like all organizations, we have a strategic plan. We are in the midst of our first year of the current strategic plan that'll run through 2021. These are the four overriding goals that drive us. We also put together annually a business development plan, which should reflect and move towards the fulfillment of the goals in our organization's strategic plan. Destination asset study was conducted through Grand Action back in 2016. We basically asked the question as an organization, if we're here and we want to get here or move up a tier as a tourist destination, do we have both the infrastructure and the resources to get that job done? We didn't have the answers, so the Destination Asset Study set out to help us chart a path to get us to those next levels. This wheel, as we like to call it, are the outcomes, the primary outcomes of that study. Experience Grand Rapids has taken the leadership role. We meet on a quarterly basis with a variety of people throughout the community that are helping keep this wheel moving. Grand Rapids Mobility, the Whitewater folks, whoever plays in these areas on this wheel, we bring together on a quarterly basis. We get updates. We help one another. All these updates are on our website. As you can see here, there's a link, so should you ever want to go in and see what's going on in any of these areas, you can do so. Hotel occupancy, that tends to be the most common thing that people look for. Those of us in the industry will tell you it's just one facet to look at. Hotel occupancy has risen over the years to a nice level. I remind folks that back in 2008, which wasn't that long ago, we were a 49% community. So it's jumped from 49% to year-to-date this year at 66.3%. So terrific growth. This is the fifth destination I've had the pleasure of representing. I've never seen growth this quickly year over year, as we've seen here in Kent County. With that, and most importantly to us and to you, is revenue. So when you look at occupancy, you could drop an occupancy as long as your rate continues to climb and/or you put more hotels into the pipeline. And we have done that. Rate has finally gotten to a level in this community that it should have been years ago. We were an undervalued destination, and rates have climbed up handsomely. Combined with good occupancy rates, has given us this really, really good revenue growth, which leads to the tax base. And here is the growth in the Kent County lodging excise tax. The, to give you some relevancy to your investment, 2018, we received about 1.89 million from Kent County through our agreement, and the return on that is Kent County through our agreement, and the return on that is between 10 and 11 million to the Lodging Excise Tax. We're estimating that that'll go up again this year, which would be our 10th consecutive record performance as a hotel community as it relates to revenue and correlating back to the Lodging Excise Tax. With that, our budget has grown, and we turn everything back into marketing. So, I remind you that our two funding sources are Kent County, Lodging Excise Tax, and a marketing assessment fee that we charge our hotels. Our hotels give us 4% of their room revenue in agreement we have with them. We bill them on a monthly basis. So the only way to grow this budget is to fill more hotel rooms. So that tells you that as we continue to fill more hotel rooms and do our job, the budget grows and we have more money to invest back in to future programs. We have a wonderful relationship with Mike and his team, and we continue to work together, meet together on a regular basis. And as a reminder, as you see here in this graph, Kent County helped get the Sports Commission off and running back in 2008 with a contribution of $250,000 each year through 2012. Experience Grand Rapids contributed another $150,000 during those first years of growing the organization. This body asked that, back in 2013, that the investment of the Lodging Excise Tax go to us as an organization, and Mike and I worked together on a contract to give them funding moving forward. And it's great to see that that funding that goes to the Sports Commission has continued to grow based on that, on that agreement between us. It'll reach nearly a million in 2020. I talked about new hotel rooms. There, you know, I just had fun with a hotel owner in town who has a variety of hotels already, and he just keeps building, and I told him he needs to lose his shovel. But I say that tongue-in-cheek because we've been able to keep up with the supply to date, and it's been a terrific growth. I mentioned 2008, back in 2008, well, really as recently as 2015, there were about 7,000 rooms in Kent County. By the end of next year, we're going to be between 10,000 and 11,000. So the growth is very, very quick, which means we got to be nimble and move quick to help fill those. Most of it has come in limited service properties. Limited service properties tend to be 100 to 130 rooms, no meeting space. The concern there for a lot of destinations is, are they taking business from one another? Because they're not really a generator of new business opportunity. But again, we've been able to keep up to date with the demand. The, as you see there, 1,971 rooms are in the pipeline. The pipeline meaning either under construction or are getting ready to start construction. And the construction projects are nine, with over 1,000 rooms still being built in Kent County. I mentioned sales, a big part of what we do. I'm going to show you here in a little bit how some of the folks in Kent County have helped us bring in some great convention groups. I'm not going to go through all this, but basically, we've got to go out, find the business. We have staff, a sales team traveling all over the United States to do that. And as you see here under site visits hosted, we're bringing folks in almost on a daily basis. Folks are coming here that are convention exec, meeting executives, looking at our destination in hopes that we could convince them to bring a future convention here. And year-to-date, we've had 189 site inspections of Kent County. And numbers continue to grow. We're anticipating ending this year at upwards of 157,000 room nights that'll be contracted for the future. So the convention business continues to stay strong. I mentioned some groups. We have a Bring It To Grand Rapids program where staff looks for local Kent County residents and regionally, quite honestly, that'll help us bring national and international groups to Grand Rapids. So we want to thank some of the folks, Tom Anther, Dave Bukowski, Brian Picardi at the airport, Jack Stewart, and Sheriff Stelma helped us with these groups that we were able to. The National Sheriffs Association, we worked 15 years to get that group here. And I remember when I took this position 11 years ago, then our Vice President of Sales was George Helmstad, he grabbed me and said, "I need you to go to Washington. We're really working trying to get national sheriffs here, and we just about have them." Well, that was 11 years ago. I'm either a terrible salesperson, or the process takes a long time. We'll go with the second. But the, we got them. And this is a prestigious group that meets at a lot of large destinations, so we're very, very proud to host this, as we are with any of these groups. And then lastly, this is a, we get, the hotels report their numbers to Smith Travel Research and Nashville Tennessee on a weekly basis. So occupancy rate, the revenue per available room, and that is all compiled, and then we can buy reports to see how we stand against our peer set. The peer set we chose here are those that we tend to butt heads with on a convention basis, not on a leisure side. And we hold our own. When we fight above our weight class, we still hold our own. You can see we're doing very, very well against the Michigan numbers. We're right there nationally as average. As you move to the right on that, you'll see what year-to-date is. So the revenue column shows we are, even with all the new rooms in the pipeline, and occupancy has, has dropped a little bit because we're filling more rooms, revenue has grown at 4% over a year ago. And that's really what's important to us. In fact, I put a note here, in 28, September of 2018, about 1,500, or I'm sorry, about 1,400 rooms were filled in Kent County. We filled 1,559 in 2019. So we're filling a lot more rooms than we did a year ago and keeping up with that supply. Any questions, me? I'm sorry for racing through it.
Good job. Thank you, Doug. Questions for Doug? Commissioner Jones.
Thank you so much, Doug, for going through all this. I am pleased to be the Commissioner rep on the board. I just want to compliment you for having such an involved and engaged board. You know, there are plenty of boards we all have assignments on, and I will just say this particular one really has the attendance, has the active members, that you just do a phenomenal job engaging everyone there on that board. So, well done, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, and I appreciate your commitment and also Mr. Britt's commitment on our board. And we are proud, and we have 25 voting members, and on average, we probably have 22 at every board meeting. So it is very active, very involved, very engaged. So, thank you.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Doug, thank you for all your work, and especially your passion for what you do. You had mentioned that we've got 10,000 to 11,000 rooms. Can you kind of go into how many of those are in the core city downtown, and what effect does that have on what conventions and size of conventions that we can drive in? Because a lot of conventions look first, the closeness of the hotels around the convention center.
Yeah, we're upwards of, there's still two hotels, I got that right, two hotels under construction downtown that'll open next year, which is going to bring us a little over 2,000, Tom? A little over 2,000 rooms. And while that's great, and it will allow us to bring in some additional convention business, our Convention Advisory Board, which are meeting plans from all over the country that we convene once a year and just pick their brain on what's going on out there and what do we need, said, and they were part of the study, that we need another convention hotel. They want the fewest hotels, the closest proximity to the meeting site. And if they can't get it here, they can get it in Cincinnati and Columbus and others that we compete with. We fight above our weight class. And so while the new hotels downtown are allowing us some opportunity, the bigger prize is if we can get another large convention hotel here. As far as the outline hotels, and I think Mike will speak to this, they've been great for the youth and amateur sports market to have these limited service properties, because that's where those groups like to stay. The biggest growth in our occupancy numbers and rate have come from our leisure market, people coming here because of, there was a bass nectar at the arena, concert at the arena this last weekend, and Kent County hotels ran 90% on, was it Thursday, Friday and Saturday night? Friday and Saturday night. That shows that activities can draw leisure visitors here, and that's happening a lot. That's where our growth is coming at. And we need those other hotels to be able to support that, because you also have corporate business in town. So the more hotels, the less leakage we have to other counties.
Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair. Mine is, question is more, we have premier hospitals, certainly we have the Spectrum, Medical Mile, whatever you want to call it. We also have Mary Freebed where patients come and stay, sometimes for very long periods of time. Do any of the hospitals that are close enough to there, and I know Mary Freebed has their own chain and system too, but do any of them offer, you know, a Mary Freebed discount, or are they thinking along those lines, or have we considered that?
Yes, yes, and yes.
Okay.
A good share of the hospitals will, Mary Freebed and others will work, lack of a better term, a corporate rate. And that would be both for folks coming to do business with them, as well as families in need of accommodations. So there is that relationship. In fact, they, Mary Freebed has a spot on our board, so they won't, they won't let us forget that.
Good.
But, yes, they do. And we're very aware of the, you know, what's going on here in health sciences is also a big opportunity for us when it comes to convention business.
Then, and I'm going to actually make a comment, that is amazing, because I had the unfortunate or fortunate experience of having to take my daughter to Mayo Clinic in Rochester. And we were there for almost a month, and there was very little that was available to us without having to get in cabs every day or whatever, when you're already going through all of that trauma. Once you got there, it was beautiful, but they had done very little around the community to make it a little bit more user-friendly for those persons and families who were experiencing having to use the Mayo Clinic system, so I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah.
Second question real quick, because you talked about bringing in events. How about the college, colleges? We are so rich in colleges and universities here in town. Do, I'm sure you partner, but we take into consideration, you know, some of the rivalries or some of the whatevers that are going on and hope to...
We love graduation work, and it fills a lot of...
There you go. All right, that's all I have.
Yeah, we have a great relationship with them. And again, going back to conferences, they're a, they're in our top three sources as far as the types of groups we go after, because we're rich in colleges and universities.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Doug.
Good morning.
Hey, just want to mention, you know, the airport is probably a pretty big piece of this puzzle, and I just want to mention that with your ambassadors out at the airport, they do such a fine job of directing people, getting people where they need to go. And when I need to find out what's going on at that airport, I go to the ambassador. Ruth retired, but there's, you know, a few others that I talk to, because if you really want to know what's going on at the airport, those are the folks that are there every day doing the job. So I appreciate that. Second, I want to say that I really appreciated your help with the ACI convention down in Florida this last November, October, maybe, I don't know, month's October, maybe September, I don't know. But we ran out of beer and cookies, so, but it was amazing to me that some of the folks were really anxious to get to Grand Rapids and couldn't wait to get here, and some never been here. And so we're really excited to be in a position to work together to bring those types of conventions. So I just appreciate your work on that, and wanted to say that.
I'll make sure staff at the airport hears your comments, and you know what the number one question they get is. Where are the bathrooms?
Yeah. We're working on that.
We're providing a service.
We're working on that.
All right, we're going to take two more questions for Doug, and then I think, Doug, you have more presentation?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm sorry, staff's back here kicking me like they're taking all my time.
Yeah, I didn't realize we were breaking it up like that. Okay, so Commissioner Womack and Commissioner Antor, and then we're going to bring up Angela.
Hello, Mr. Smalls.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good to see you, very proud of your work and the staff, of course. When it comes to our search engine optimization for experienced GR and online presence and being able to make sure we're getting experienced GR and definitely the people you partner with, and, you know, the great hotels and entertainment in Grand Rapids, into the news feeds and into the pathways of those online different services, is that handled in-house, or who are we working with? Because I noticed when it first came out, I was just so proud of your online presence, but as technology changes with the speed of light, you know, what are we doing to keep up, not just experienced GR, but your partners, so that we are in those search engine optimizations locally and globally to attract more business and people to Grand Rapids and Kent County?
I'm going to hear from Janet about some of the marketing opportunities, which falls under that, but I would just say very briefly, I'm very proud. It's in-house, our staff is terrific. They're pounding content out there on an hourly basis. It never stops, so a very aggressive marketing program that includes our digital presence.
All right, very proud of the work, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Antor, and then we're going to bring up Angela Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Doug.
Good morning, Commissioner.
First of all, thanks again for all your support for Freedom Cruise. We had our best honorary event ever in our six-year history, so we help, we thank you very much. Real quickly, I know as far as industry shows, they can kind of come and go during the middle of the week because of the nature of the type of show. How are we doing as far as consumer trade shows, which their wheelhouse is usually in the winter and on the weekends? How we set, is there any plans for maybe expanding space for those types of shows? And are we at a point now where we're turning anybody away?
The ones that are here, and you're correct, most of them take place in the winter, which we really want to have conventions throughout the year also to fill hotel rooms. But no, I think in order to create more opportunity, it's going to take more space. And the study that I referenced earlier showed convention center expansion is an intermediate need, not an immediate need. They identified another convention hotel's immediate need in order to grow business, but they felt that a convention center, a successful convention center is going to run anywhere between 65 and 70% occupancy. It don't run 100% because you got days of move-in, move-out and stuff. We're running at about 55, between 55, 60. So there's still opportunity, but in order to improve that, we've got to have another hotel to do that. So the space will come, but it's not going to be in the next three to five years. You're welcome.
All right, we're going to bring up Angela, and then I think Janet, and then so if you'll all stay for questions at the very end, that'd be great, too. Good morning.
Good morning. All right, I just have the one slide, and just to remind everyone, I've been with the organization now for two and a half years, and my role is multifaceted. It's a hybrid function. I support our workforce development, our community relations, and our diversity and inclusion efforts internally. And then I also support our sales and marketing team. So one busy individual, but it's been an amazing journey, and just want to give you a little bit of update as to what has taken place this year, because you certainly helped to invest in some of these efforts. This year, we launched the Academy of Hospitality and Tourism at Ottawa Hills High School, and excited to have started that program with 16 students. So I want to thank Grand Valley State University, AHC, and other partners who have come along. And students are definitely enjoying the curriculum. They've been able to take a few field trips to partner hotels. They've had speakers come in, and there's just much more on the horizon, but we're excited about the future of what we consider to be a pipeline of talent from the secondary education institution. Also, a grand welcome reception was an initiative that we started three, this will be the third year. It has been in conjunction with the International Beer, Wine, and Food Festival, and we definitely invite all of you to join us. It is a reception that welcomes newcomers to Grand Rapids with an opportunity to connect them to community resources and rising leaders. And anyone that has been to Grand, or has moved to Grand Rapids within the last two year, we, last two years, we encourage to come out and just meet and connect with community. It is very seldom that you can go into a new community and really connect as soon as you like to or as deeply as you want to, like a community with Grand Rapids. You know, I think about a trip I just recently took to Vegas and Houston, and my thought around, you know, having to integrate into a community that's so large, it's pretty daunting. But Grand Rapids offers that ability for you to connect as deeply as you want to, as soon as you want to, and this is just one of those ways. So November 20th is that event, and I've already talked to my assistant, we're going to get that information to whoever disseminates, updates to you all, so that you can either attend or extend the invitation to your constituents that you know are new to the city. Also, we have continued to feed content on... content onto our Rapid Exchange blog, which is an online blog that allows for us to elevate the voices of leaders, of our leadership team. Some of the recent articles or blog posts that we've posted includes the state of black tourism, and understanding the importance of associations, trying to help the community understand what we do. You know, we talk to our meeting planners, we talk to our leisure travelers, but often, we don't talk to our community members to try to give them an understanding of how we help drive economic development here to the community, or to the county of Kent. So, the more that they know, the better they can advocate for the work that we do, and so this is one of those ways. Next, we have the National Coalition of Black Meeting Planners and Connect Diversity. These are two ways that I support the sales team in going out and doing sales missions, so you heard Commissioner Morgan talk about the ACI conference. This is an opportunity for me to support the team with creating new leads and accounts for multicultural business to Grand Rapids, and I'm excited to and pleased to share that we have a couple that are, we've gotten a couple of RFPs as a, as a result of building those relationships with the Jack and Jill of America, and then also the Church of God in Christ, so we're working with local community members to help bring those conferences to our city as well. So, that's very exciting to be able to be a part of that process, and, and support our sales team in that way. And then, last but certainly not least, we've been doing some internal work on our inclusion system, it's called an Inclusion Systems Assessment. It's our effort internally to look at how we are integrating diversity and inclusion throughout our system. So, just as any function of an organization, like a finance role, or marketing function, these are just things that are understood to be important, and we want that same level of importance and priority placed on our diversity and inclusion efforts, internally as well as the work that we do externally, but you sometimes have to start in-house, and so, we had the pleasure of having County Administrator Britt on that, well, as a function of his role on our board. He serves on our Diversity Advisory Council, which in turn served as leadership to the five areas that we looked at internally to assess our systems and the work that we're doing, so that it's not a function of Angela, but it is a function of Experience Grand Rapids, that we are always keeping in mind the diversity and inclusiveness of the work that we do from a tourism industry, and in partnership with our community hotels, restaurants, attractions, and so forth. So, that work has completed, it's not done, I mean, oh, let me back up. We have finalized the work of those committees, and they have giving us, given us recommendations, so we're moving forward on those recommendations, and the future of that looks like more of a community advisory board, so we will continue to do the work that has been recommended by our board members, our community stakeholders that served to support that work, as well as our employees who did the execution of a lot of the work internally, and that will continue to be the same, but we're going to look to broaden that, that team, and have it more inclusive of certain diverse groups in our community, that will help us continue to make sure that we are marketing, and going after groups, and doing the work internally, make sure we're responsible to not only you all as our stakeholders and partners, but as, also as our community. So, I think that includes everything that I wanted to share with you, and the essence of the time we have left. Are there any questions?
Angela, actually, I'm going to have the three of you stay up front, and you have Janet get through hers, and then we'll ask questions
Okay.
at the end, just in keeping with our time management. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Janet, please come up. Thank you. Welcome.
Alright, I'll try to move through my material quickly. We, this is mentioned earlier, but we focus on content marketing, and the hub of our content stories is really our website, and related to the question on search engine optimization, that's really important to what we do, because we need the organic traffic. Organic traffic is traffic that's going to come via the search engines. We have a website address, but most people just use search, and that's about 50% of our website traffic. I can tell you that we have about 8,500 to 9,000 users on our website each day. We combine that together with our social channel communication, and also inviting travel journalists and influencers from around the country to come in and have an experience here, so that they can tell their audiences the authentic version of their experience. We continue to stay very focused on the six top boxes, which we call our brand pillars. So, we do storytelling, visualization, videos, photos, Instagram stories, on and on, focused on these six things, which are things that we can do really well in Kent County. They're also things that are attractors for visitors to come to our community. I want to also mention our work on the bottom three boxes, and specifically our work with Commissioner Bukowski's Disability Advocates. We now have over 100 additional venues, or additional pieces of information on accessibility for locations throughout the county, and we're continuing to expand that work each year, and our goal here is to help visitors that have challenges have the information available to them, so that their trip here can also be enhanced. And, you know, yesterday, I just heard some news, I'd hope it's not in Mike's presentation, but there was, well, is it in your presentation?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Well, I heard this morning, or last night, that the Michigan Special Olympics is going to be putting in a training facility here, and so what that means to me is that our work in this area is really important. I want to talk about one of the six pillars, because last year when I was here, I mentioned that the Destination Asset Study really encouraged us to do more outdoor recreation, and I might have mentioned that we were working on a video series, and so, I'm going to move next to showing you a piece of the content that was created specifically to help us do that. It's an exciting time right now to live in Grand Rapids, to be involved with the rivers and the natural area, and just see how it's all changing.
I think the biggest thing is really identifying, what does it mean to be a river city?
We have a lot to offer people in the outdoors.
It's Michigan's kind of best-kept secret.
I think it's surprising to most people, and then the more they look, the more they find why it makes perfect sense.
I would have never thought that we would experience this type of growth, and this type of change, in the short amount of time we have. I'm excited to see where it goes, because it's just been amazing so far.
I want Grand Rapids to be known as a place where people can come and really experience the outdoors in a variety of ways.
I can't wait to see my kids in the river. That's the personal side of it.
We definitely see the Grand Rapids cycling scene growing and diversifying. It's just really fun to be a part of.
I want it to be a place that welcomes people of all types, and is accessible, and offers opportunity for a great weekend, or life, really.
I think Grand Rapids will continue to grow, it will continue to become diversified, and it's our hope that people will continue to have that connection to the Grand River, so that the city can continue to be vibrant, because really, you know, not to be cliché, but, but a river does run through it.
It, this Grand Outdoors Series has longer format, storytelling, and also short video clips that we can use on our social channels, to really help people understand about the amazing outdoor recreational opportunities we have throughout the entire county. Look for winter, we filmed winter last year, and it's in the final edit, so that'll be coming soon. I don't want to bring winter too soon, but I guess, I, I wasn't sure I could talk about snow today, but apparently it's okay.
It is coming.
We launched this summer with a new seasonal campaign focus, so we do have a lot more hotel rooms to fill, and so we kind of upped our game, and we had, we launched in the summer, a new newsletter format. This, we've taken that into fall, we have winter launching on November 22, and so we have a new newsletter, a new landing page. We've had, well, we have over 8,000 subscribers to our newsletter. Our website is trafficking about 18% ahead of last year. We also have a series of digital ads that are running, which, together with the, the digital ads and the social media ads that you can see here, we've had over 7 million impressions since this was launched in September, and so this is our new focus, and this is how we're moving forward, to continue to increase the conversations and the content about experiences here. And then I want to conclude this morning with telling you about a conference that we're quite excited to be hosting next summer, and that is the U.S. Travel Association, which our leader Doug is actually a member of the Board of Directors of U.S. Travel, and that's a significant opportunity for him and for us, to have a seat at the table for travel nationally, but we're also excited to host their summer educational conference, and there will be 800 to 1,000 of our peers from destinations, states, and really the minds of U.S. within the travel industry for the country, coming to our community next August. And this year, we had the opportunity to go to that conference, and invite the attendees to come, and so I want to share with you the short video that we partnered together with our friends at Pure Michigan, to produce, to invite the U.S. travel industry to come here.
Let's propose a toast to the traveler, to those who embrace the journey, and who long to uncover somewhere different, somewhere new. Welcome to Grand Rapids. A place where art is part of the fabric, a fabric that can speak to us, move us, leaving a deep impression that stays with us. Where the idea of farm to fork flourishes, with local growers shaping international tastes, and serving tables from two to 22. Where countless homegrown makers create their handmade crafts, welcoming us with open hearts, while opening our minds to what's possible. Where the outdoors is right outside our windows, begging us to live in the moment, and to capture the excitement that each day brings. A place where legendary pints craft strangers into new friends, inviting us into the conversation, one sip at a time. May the curiosities of the traveler continue. Here's to somewhere different, somewhere new. Here's to Pure Michigan, and here's to seeing you next year in Grand Rapids.
Great. Any questions for Doug, Angela, or Janet? Alright, seeing none. Oh, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I just, again, in working with you on the board, great work. Angela, shout out to you, too, for the internal training session you had in September. I noticed you didn't mention that, but you should, because that was really powerful, and still impactful for me. And then Janet, the question I have for you is, what impact will the state cuts have for what you do?
I was anticipating this question.
I figured as much. Somebody had to ask it, I might as well be the one.
Well, we are hopeful that the state legislature and the governor will appropriate some resources for Pure Michigan, so that, that award-winning messaging campaign across the country that we've been able to partner with will actually have a 2020 year. Last week, I attended the planning session with our, with my peers throughout the state and the team there. They are planning as if they will have some resources, because they, they believe that they will. So, I am hopeful that they're correct, and will have, be able to continue to do our partnership with them. If not, we will do our best to continue to promote this place as a place in Michigan to travel, and I would anticipate that our partners throughout the state, other destinations, that we will rally together, and do the best that we can with, you know, we don't know the outcome of that yet, so we're hopeful.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair. Just a comment to my colleagues, I want to encourage you to look, look forward to that information about the grand welcome reception on the 20th. I've been able to go to a couple of those, and it's really a great opportunity. There's some amazing people coming to Grand Rapids and moving in here, and being able to connect with them is, is pretty amazing, so encourage you to watch for that. Thanks.
Commissioner Ponstine.
Thank you, Chair. Just to tag on Commissioner Jones' comments about Pure Michigan, I was going to mention that later in my commissioner comments, but, I mean, the great thing, not only does Pure Michigan and the advertising we do draw people in, I've been in cities around the country, I've seen the ads, but what it also does is, the Pure Michigan ads make Michigan residents feel proud to live in Michigan, just like your ads for Experience Grand Rapids make us proud of what we have, and I think that's a value that gets lost too often. So, thank you, and hopefully the funding is restored. There's a lot of people working to try to ensure that.
Alright, any other questions? Thank you, guys. Awesome videos. Appreciate your presentation. We are on to item 5C, and I'll call up Mike Gusweiler. Try to keep it under 45 minutes.
Well, good morning. Chair Bolter, I don't want to call you out as you go get more coffee, but Administrator Britt, Commissioners, it's always a pleasure to be here and give this annual update, and it's always a pleasure to do it with our partners in tourism and hospitality with Experience Grand Rapids. The good news is, is I'll be brief, because Janet and Doug took most of my content. I'm kidding, not about being brief. I will be brief. Economic prosperity and quality of life, those were key words at the beginning of the Kent County Proposed 2020 Budget. It's really no coincidence that that is at the heart of our vision and mission as the West Michigan Sports Commission, and there's no coincidence that that was the reason that Kent, that Kent County Board of Commissioners invested in this startup nonprofit, and I think you'd be proud to see the impact that we've had, in really creating economic prosperity and adding to our quality of life. We've got a very strong Board of Directors, many of them made it here today, took time out of their schedule to show their thanks, and I thank them for, for being here. They come from a cross-section of our corporate, athletic, hospitality community, as well as having a couple of our Kent County Commissioners serve on our board, so Commissioners Brevet and Commissioners Jones, thank you so much for your input and helping guide our organization. We have an extremely strong staff, hard-working staff, that really focuses on three key areas of having an impact around sports tourism and bringing visitors into our community. That's our core business of the West Michigan Sports Commission, and bidding on, and hosting, and, and looking at a variety of youth and amateur sporting events that we have coming into our community, and I'll, I'll touch on that. We have our newest entity under the umbrella of the Sports Commission, the Michigan Sports Alliance, led by Eric Engelbartz and his team, predominantly with the Meyer State Games in Michigan, but other initiatives that I'll touch on as well, and of course, the Art Band Sports Complex, where we've got some key staff overlooking that facility and the impact that comes from that, but also employing more than 20, 30 temporary seasonal employees. Like any organization, and Doug touched on their strategic directives, we're in our fourth strategic plan, where we have five key initiatives outlined here, certainly ensuring our financial stability, that we have the resources to continue to the work that we're doing, and Doug touched on the resources that are provided doing. And Doug touched on the resources that are provided to us from the lodging tax and hotel assessment, and so our contract looks to get renewed next year for another five years. It is a key resource for us to continue to do our work, and we'll always look at other means of growing the impact that we can have. Business development, it's really all about creating demand generators that we can continue to write, raise the bar in terms of the impact that we're having. Organizational alignment really is around both board succession, having the right board members, and, and keeping the community engaged in bringing our board up many levels to continue to have that impact and that guidance and strategic planning, but looking at the efficiencies of our staff, and I'll touch a little bit on what we're doing there. Enhancing our brand relevance is imperative to really let the community know the impact that we are making, and facility development will continue to be a champion in the community around building more infrastructure that has that impact, and certainly the Art Van Sports Complex is proof of that. As far as our revenue sources, looking at this, of course, you see the biggest piece of the pie that we rely on is that contribution, investment from the hotel assessment and the lodging tax, again, referring to Doug's slide, but also our operations in the Art Van Sports Complex, the State Games of Michigan, our self-sustaining operations make up a lot of the resources that we have through registration and sponsorship, so that we can bring those visitors into our community, and you'll see the impact of that. And then, of course, our support in the business, philanthropy, and charitable community, the Convention Arena Authority, as we go out and market Van Andel Arena and DeVos Place for sports tournaments and events, and our special events, our annual luncheon, which we're working on our 14th annual luncheon, and more information will be coming out about that. So some major events that we held in 2019, our average calendar of events is hovering around 80 events that we manage over the course of an annual year, but this hits some of the highlights, from girls' basketball finals to youth bowling and youth hockey championships, lacrosse championships, and NAIA with our partners in those schools, as well as our NCAA D2 school and Grand Valley State University. USA BMX, the first time that we hosted a national race up at the Rock City BMX complex that was able to be placed there because of our work around the Art Van Sports Complex. U.S. Rowing Masters Nationals, we invited them back and had success record numbers for the second time in hosting that event, as well as Class D National Championships out at the Art Van Sports Complex with USA softball and gymnastics championships. One of our measurements that we certainly want to have that impact on, that reciprocates throughout the community, is that hotel room growth, the room night generation that we're providing. It's on an upward trend. I think our partners in Experience Grand Rapids and our partnership, my partnership with Doug, will indicate that this is a growth market. It's one that we want to continue to invest, invest in. I say to my team that, you know, my hope is we eclipse 100,000 room nights in the next five or 10 years. Certainly a lofty goal, but if we can create those demand generators, have that investment in the work that we're doing, I think it's within reach. I touched on one of our operating entities being the Michigan Sports Alliance. The, the vision, the mission around that is really occupying the space around health and wellness as it relates to sport, and Eric and his team really focus on that with the Meyer State Games in Michigan, and the Summer Games and the Winter Games, but some other new initiatives that I'll touch on in a forward slide here. But let me talk about the numbers and the impact that the state games are having. We celebrated 10 years of the Summer Games and five years of the Winter Games. These individuals range certainly in age from 2 to 92, with the bulk of them being in that 12 to 17 and, and 12 and under range, and families are traveling with them. So that's an important statistic, but we are seeing all ages, all abilities participating from all reaches throughout the state of Michigan. In the Summer Games, over 8,000 athletes, in fact, over 8,500, and nearly 2,000 athletes in the Winter Games, near equal in terms of, of men and women competing. Looking forward, we've got our dates set for the Winter Games, February 14th to 16th, and then the Summer Games being June 25 to 28. We always love inviting you out to our opening ceremonies. It's the paternity, the opportunity for these athletes to really feel as though they're, it's bigger than their individual sport. And in 2020, we've got another exciting opportunity in hosting the USA Masters Games. The Masters Games really fit within the Olympic movement with regard to ages 21-plus and many of these different national sports governing bodies, and so on top of the, the resources of running our state games in Michigan, Summer Games will also be hosting this event, which we expect to bring in as many as 2,500 additional athletes and their families, and we're excited to, to host that. Another initiative under the Michigan Sports Alliance around that health and wellness is working with our corporate community, and so Eric and his team are putting together a pretty fun event with regard to some unique networking and competition and team-building exercises, and you see some of them listed here in a step challenge, bowling, ax throwing. It is under strict guidance, so if you're interested in it, but, but certainly more information here under West Michigan Corporate Challenge. And then touching on the impact of the Art Van Sports Complex, we completed our fifth year in terms of the sports complex and having an impact of bringing these travel tournaments, these travel teams each weekend in our seasonal climate from April to September, so it equates to 18 to 20 weekends, and we continue to grow on the backside in terms of the impact that we can have with more softball championships, and you see that comparatively over the last three year period is how 2019 ranked, and the economic activity that comes through the visitor spending. So to date, as an entity, which is more than 12 years, it's 830 sporting events and tournaments, nearly 1.5 million spectators and athletes that have come to our region, and nearly $400 million of direct visitor spending. I talked about leading and championing the facility development. You know, you saw the numbers with the Art Van Sports Complex and the impact it's had, and we are focused on continuing that conversation right now, and Doug touched on the destination asset study. Our focus is the youth and amateur sports and the potential of a multi-field rectangle complex. The, the wonderful thing about certainly our economy, our effort as a sports commission, and some of our successes, we have a couple of communities that are interested in working with us. So we continue conversations, and I really feel good about the opportunity to move forward and eventually have a rectangle field complex that can accommodate a multitude of sports. As far as the branding of our entity, it's really about being a, a community asset, generating economic activity through sports tourism, and so we made a, a pretty broad step in moving out of our office space provided by Experience Grand Rapids, which I thank them for providing that for us for the past 12 years, but really going out on our own and establishing our brand that much further, providing a space for our staff to do the work that they need to do, but by bringing local community and, and outside visitors into our space. So these are some of the design principles we used around that, really, you know, being brand-centric, having an environment that inspires a healthy lifestyle, and really increasing the interaction and the communication amongst our team. So hopefully you all received the invitation. We've got an open house scheduled for November 19 from 5 to 7. We're right across the street, so certainly it's just a, a short walk over 2, 300 Ottawa, and we do hope that you can join us. If not that evening, we certainly encourage you and welcome you into our space if you need to drop down and work from a spot, but, or have a cup of coffee with our staff and learn more about what we're doing. So I thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for your support and investment, and to say stay tuned for the continued work of our board and staff.
Great, thanks, Mike. Great presentation. Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you. Good morning, Mike. This summer, the Voorhees family celebrated the 30th birthday of our special need grandson. I remember the days we prayed he'd live through the day 30 years ago, and so thankful for the field that we have at the complex, to recognize that there are folks incapacitated in some ways, but yet very able to enjoy a time on the ball diamond, as beautiful as that one is, and so we, for his birthday present, made a gift to, to the field and buying a brick. Maybe just a little bit, if you would, about that, and that maybe there are more people out there who would just realize what a, what a beautiful ball diamond we have in the whole complex, but also in that field. I, and the name of the field just doesn't come to me right now.
Well, and thank you, Commissioner Voorhees. You know, I, I think sport provides that, that arena, that environment, that all can play, all can participate, all can feel that they can shed any disabilities or challenges they might have, and that field is a great example. We're so proud to partner with Tony Comden, the West Michigan Miracle League, which I serve on the board of, and it, it is hitting home runs, not to use the pun, but literally of kids that want to participate that otherwise could not, but also in adults, and Tony started an adult league, and, you know, I know this hits at the heart of Commissioner Bukowski and the work that he does, but we do so much other work outside of those lines as well, with Special Olympics, with adaptive sports. We just worked with the Griffin sled hockey team to help them host a Russian team. You know, there's so many opportunities to do that within sport, and we're proud to be able to represent that.
Commissioner Breeve.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I just wanted to thank you, Mike, for your leadership, and, you know, I've always been passionate about sports, and, you know, it's impacted my life, and I see it impacting my kids too, and I just think that one of the examples of your leadership was this summer when you chose to celebrate at the Meyer State Games, the 10-year anniversary, and you were involved in 10 different sports. So, and you may not have been, you know, excellent at every single one of them, but you took the time and you really shined, and I think you may have inspired some other board members to partner up and maybe get involved too. So, thanks for your leadership.
Well, and thank you for your service on our board and for what all of you do here. I was, I was coaxed a little bit into it by Eric and his team, but it was a lot of fun, and, you know, it just proved, I think, that all ages and all abilities can compete. So hopefully you take note of that, and we see all of you register.
Commissioner Talan.
Thank you, Chair. Want to add my thanks for your leadership, Mike. A number of years ago, when discussions about restoring the Grand River were happening, some of the talk was about that work enhancing our status as a top rowing venue in the country. Things have kind of changed in, in restoring the river. Is that still potential? Is that still something we're looking forward to?
You know, certainly our organization supports restoring the rapids, and I know in speaking with my partner with Experience Grand Rapids and Doug, it enhances our destination. It's, it's not anything that another destination can make claim to, or that many can, you know, so it's unique to our destination. From a sports perspective, it certainly will enhance opportunities around whitewater rafting or whitewater kayaking. Any impact it's had on rowing, I can tell you either will enhance it or won't have an impact because of what we already heard from hosting our second time of the U.S. Masters, or U.S. Rowing Masters National. People loved it. They loved the venue. They loved the natural, not a race course that we have that's tree-lined, and so it blocks some of those breezes. Yes, there's a current, but when we hold it in, in August, and, and rowing happens throughout the year from April to September, the, the current's not too bad in August, but we already have a world-class rowing venue. So I'm proud of that, and I'm excited for what the Restore the Rapids opportunities will create for sports as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I have absolutely, almost no doubt, and I'm not a numbers person, but in six years, you almost doubled the hotel growth from 2013 to 2019. That's impressive, very impressive in and of itself. Second of all, has, I know you, the gymnastics was mentioned in there. Does, does dance ever come up as one of the things? I didn't see it, but, I mean, it's...
Yeah, absolutely. Whether it's competitive dance or artistic dance, there's a lot of competitions out there, and it's something we've got our eye on.
Okay, good, because, and also when Commissioner Voorhees mentioned the, the baseball diamond, there was a huge article and more and more and more, and I'm sure that Mr. Bukowski could tell us more about the wheelchair dancing, and if you've ever seen it, it is, I mean, it's absolutely incredible to, to think. I have trouble enough just moving around on my feet, so.
I've researched that.
Truly looking, it, it is, it's becoming more and more, and should have started a long time ago, but if we could get in on that, that would be amazing. And then just the last one, perhaps we commissioners could join in on, I forget what it was, which day, yeah, the corporate, and we could do a fouling team. I just learned about that for the first time the other day. It's drawing a football at bowling pins, so surely we could come up with something like that. So anyway, thank you very much for what you do.
I think this is recorded, so we expect that to happen.
Commissioner Bukowski, did you have a question?
Yeah, well, really just a comment. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Experience Grand Rapids. You know, just the partnerships that we have, one of our sayings at Disability Advocates, to talk about my day job, is inclusion drives innovation. It is all about quality of life. It is about including our family, friends, neighbors, and oh, by the way, it also adds to our community's bottom line. You know, the statistics at the Mary Freebed YMCA is just, again, it's, it's awesome. Our partnership has statewide and now national attention, so just keep up the awesome work, and, and we will be there to work with you. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mike? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much. We are on to item six, public comment related to our agenda for today. Any public comment for today's agenda? All right, seeing none. We're on to item seven, consent agenda, and I'll call in Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I would like to move the consent agenda.
Moved by Commissioner Womack, support by Commissioner Breeve. Questions or comments on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Vonck.
Yes.
I did skip Voorhees. Commissioner Voorhees.
Yes.
Commissioner Talan.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stack.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks. Skaggs.
Yes.
Saulfeld.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Breeve.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Just making sure Commissioner Voorhees was paying attention.
We're on to item eight, resolutions, and I'll call in Commissioner Voorhees for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my honor to present our lonely resolution of the day, which is a resolution of today's date, number 104 so far this year, and it's from, it's about the Alligan County Equalization Agreement, Amendment Number Two, and add one full-time position in equalization.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Coleman, or Commissioner Voorhees, support by Commissioner Coleman. Questions or comments? All right, seeing none. This is not a roll call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. We are on to item nine, public comment related to any general county matter. Any public comment today? Please come up and state your name and address, and you have three minutes. Good morning.
Good morning. Dennis Heffron, a member of the Kent County Agricultural Preservation Board, and wanted to just give you a little update. We are working on securing funding so that we can apply for federal, or for state funding this year, which has a 25-75% match. So just wanted to kind of give you an update on that, where we're at. It appears that we will be applying. We don't know yet for the, the amount, but we will be applying for state fund, or for state funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment today on any general county matter? All right, seeing none. We're on to Commissioner Reports. Any reports today, official reports? Commissioner Breeve? Commissioner Brevi?
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I have a brief report. The Sustainable Business Park Advisory Committee, we met on Monday, and we just got an update about some infrastructure items. So there's a lot of work to be done, and it's going on kind of behind the scenes. But one of the things, too, that's going to be happening that's important to the park and also DPW is the Hunter Street Bridge, which we know has been hit a few times, that is going to start being under construction, reconstruction, in the springtime, once it thaws, and it should go through November 2020. So I'm looking forward to that, and I'm sure many of you that travel through the south part of the county are, too. That's a heavily trafficked area. So just a brief update, and our next meeting will be in January.
Commissioner Reports today, any other? Commissioner Stack?
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I'm going to move from the theme of sports and exciting development in our tourism to behavioral health. Sorry about that. But just briefly, a report, the conversations with the state for the Lake Shore Regional Entity continue to move forward. It has actually been fairly positive in the last couple of weeks. It appears that we are likely to land at a resolution over the course of the next thirty days, which will ultimately require us to come back to our individual counties for approval of those changes. The end process, though, is still likely to end up with a model that's very close to what we've designed, and, which is kind of exciting, because at this point, it is probably the only unique model around the state with the demise of the 298 project. So that will continue to look like a local public governance at its core with the partnership with our friends at Beacon. Moving to the next level, Network 180, the good news is that funding appears to be on upward trend. And so it appears that through the course of this new funding year in 2020, the revenues are enhanced, they're increased for the region, and within the region, the allocation formula will give us sufficient funds to, we think, address the needs that we have and the costs that we'll have this year. The caveat for that is that we continue to hold that loss for last year and the year before that. And since the regional entity doesn't have the funds, ultimately, we're carrying that debt at the local level, so we continue to look for a solution for that.
Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Chair. Maybe hoping most of you saw the news of the John Ball Zoo receiving the epic award from the Chamber of Commerce. Just thankful for our crew at the John Ball Zoo. We've closed the gate for normal season, but we're into construction season and looking for all the resources that people would like to donate and do it before the end of the year as a tax deduction for John Ball Zoo. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other official reports? Commissioner Woodin?
I yield back. I thought we were at miscellaneous, I apologize.
Oh, okay. Hennessy, Commissioner Hennessy.
To continue with Commissioner Voorhees' report, the, a new playground was dedicated last week at the John Ball Zoo in the Gardens area, and it is one that is intended for all persons to be accessible. And it has some very interesting aspects to it. And part of the winter projects will be to enhance the entrance and to make things more accessible. That is a major goal of the John Ball Zoo in the, in its, you know, moving forward is to make things accessible to all, to have everything, it's on a hill, but to make everything graded so that people can reach all of the exhibits, and especially to get into the zoo.
Any other official reports? No airport board report today? Just checking.
Next meeting.
Okay. Our clerk had asked to give a quick report on the election from yesterday, from two days ago.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to present to the board a very brief report from Tuesday's election. By all measures, it was a very, very smooth and successful election day, which we're really proud of our election staff here and all of our local election officials as well, in addition to the citizens who take their time and work these polls. We did have six cities who had municipal board and commission races, and we had three jurisdictions with local tax proposals and seven school districts that had proposals on the ballot. Just some quick statistics, we had countywide of those who were able to cast a vote, fifty-six thousand, fifty-one total votes, making up about a twenty percent voter turnout. We are seeing a continued surge in absentee voter participation. We had thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and ten voters went to the polls on election day to cast their ballots, and twenty-six thousand, sixty-five voters chose to use absentee voting as their, as their way of casting the ballot. That's a forty-one percent of our voters used absentee voting this election. So we do know that that's obviously going to continue to increase as we work with the impact of proposal three changes. And so I just kind of wanted to give you a rundown. It was a good night, good day at the polls, good night here at our office, receiving and posting election results. We did have all the results transmitted and posted around midnight, and, you know, there are two different processes, depending on whether they're using a precinct, a precinct tabulator to transmit results for absentees or a absentee counting board with a high-speed scanner. So we're able to utilize multiple different avenues based on what the local jurisdictions like to use to transmit those results, and it was a great day. We're looking forward to 2020.
Great. Thank you. We're on to miscellaneous, and I'll call in Commissioner Woodin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, it's appropriate, because I wanted to comment on the uptick in turnout that I saw in the city of Grand Rapids during the election. The last municipal race that we had in an odd year, we had a fifteen percent turnout. Now we have a twenty percent turnout. That, you know, twenty-five percent surge, while certainly still not the target that we want to have it, is showing positive growth, and I can only attribute that to proposal three and the abilities that we now have to have folks vote on their own time, especially if they don't have the same liberties that someone like me has to go to the polling location during work hours. So I'm very thankful for the voters for passing proposal three last year, and only hope that we will continue to see a steady increase in turnout in our odd-year elections. Thank you.
Commissioner Brevi.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I just briefly wanted to expand on what Janet mentioned during her presentation about the Special Olympics of Michigan, and they purchased the South Christian High School building, which is something near and dear to my heart, as I'm an alum, and I just couldn't think of a better organization to use that. And I think it's such a huge asset for our county and our community. It actually resides in Commissioner Coleman's district, but I'm right on the edge there. So I'm excited to get involved and, you know, support that organization, so, exciting.
Commissioner Skaggs.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Three quick things, in no particular order. Wanted to congratulate the East Grand Rapids girls cross-country team, they're D2 state champions. And in Division Two, we had two East Grand Rapids individuals both win the individual state championship, Evan Bishop and Anna Peter. Also wanted to, I know we all got an email, but wanted to compliment Administrator Britt and welcome Jeff Dude, or Dodd, or Dode. Dode? Thank you. The...
Like, like Woodin?
It's like Woodin. Anyway, despite my inability to pronounce his last name, I did work with Jeff, who is what I will be referring to him from now on. I worked with him in East Grand Rapids, and I'm just really excited to have him on the team here at the county. Also, wanted to congratulate all the winners in the election last night in the nineteenth district, but especially we have a new mayor in East Grand Rapids, Katie Favalli, and looking forward to working with her. I know she's looking forward to finding ways to partner with the county. Thanks.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I, too, want to thank everyone that came out and bow last, this past election day. It is tough to find people to run for public office. You only have to read in the paper why people don't want to do it. I want to give hats off. We had six people running for three seats in Granville, twenty-eight percent voter turnout. You know, I want to congratulate the three that won, but I also want to congratulate the three that chose the opportunity to run for public office. That's the sad thing about, there's winners and there are losers, and to put yourself out like that could be, I mean, should be commended. I want to give you a brief update on the Michigan Association of Counties. Been at a couple meetings over the past couple weeks, and this budget stalemate is a stalemate, and the lobbyists from MAC are saying they don't see anything that's going to be done about this in the near future. I mean, this, the, what's happening in Lansing between the legislature and the governor is just unacceptable. You've got Eagles in place, and, you know, what they're forgetting about is the people and the counties and everyone else in the state that it's going to affect. Yes, it's going to affect Kent County, but there's a lot of counties around here where they had their pill funding cut. That was forty percent of their budgets for some counties. We have some counties now that are going to take the state on by not accepting prisoners into their system and send them back to the state. Though it sounds like a good idea to me, talking to our sheriff's department, we've got one of the model jail systems in the state of Michigan. We provide services before, during, and after that the state doesn't. So that doesn't just harm county versus state government, that's harming the individuals on trying to get them not to return to our prison system in the state. So something that's got to be done. I don't know what that is. I'm not going to apologize to any state rep that says that, you know, I'm contacting them too much, bringing this subject up whenever I can. I'm doing that. MAC's got a mechanism where you can contact your state reps. There's already a form letter made out. You can tweak it to say whatever you want on it, and it will, with a push of a button, will go to all your state reps and the governor. I've done that three times, and I've got responses from my state rep and senator saying, Stan, we know how you feel. But at the end of the day, what the lobbyists are hearing from Lansing is that they're not hearing from the counties, that this isn't a problem and this isn't a priority. And I just encourage all of you to take the time, you don't have to go to the MAC site, just pick up your phone and call your state rep and senator, that this is serious, it's time to at least come back, talk face to face, and resolve this, because this isn't a money issue. This is just how the money's going to be spent, and that's what the sad part is. And then one more thing I want to add, over the past couple years, we've heard a lot about dark stores. Prior to that, you know, we had cities complaining about business going to the tax tribunal, especially the year after they opened, and they're there the next year wanting their taxes cut. I'm not one that advocates that we need more taxes, or we're not paying enough, or we need to pay more, but there's got to be a better way that we collect taxes in the state of Michigan. And that's a problem maybe the governor and the state legislature need to address, because the next issue that's coming up, and it's already here in Kent County, is under the 503-1C tax-free law. More and more medical facilities are applying for that, and through court decisions, they're starting to win appeals and saying that, yes, a doctor's or a medical office is a nonprofit, and they're exempt from taxes. Now, this is at the very ground level, but this has been going to be a growing concern going forward. It's already here in Kent County. I heard a lawyer from Dickerson Wright speak on this topic, and it's, it's, you know, every city or county doesn't want to say, no, I don't want a doctor's or a medical facility in the town. And whether they're a 501-3C or not, needs to be addressed at the state level, because what it's going to do is going to start siphoning county dollars, city dollars, and tax dollars away from what the general intent was in the beginning. So I just want to throw that out to staff, that that is an emerging issue, and I'm going to say in the end, it's going to make the dark store issue pale in comparison.
Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like everyone to remember that this coming Monday is Veterans Day, so thank you to all those who have served our country. We just wanted to make sure that we remember that, because we don't have another meeting until after. I will be serving at Brands with Tommy Brand, so that will be exciting. If you were a veteran, come out, get your free steak dinner, so it's very generous of him. Also, our seniors, we have a Thanksgiving luncheon in Kentwood, November the thirteenth. It's a free luncheon for the senior citizens, so please come out and enjoy that lunch. You've earned it. And then we also like to say congratulations to our Administrator Britt, being featured in the Grand Rapids Times, he and his wife. We appreciate all the work that you do in our community. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. While we're doing congratulations for state win events, the marching bands from West Michigan dominated the Ford Field successes, including Flight One for Rockford High School, Flight Two, Jenison, Flight Three, Reef's Puffer, and Flight Five, Kent City. So that is no small success. That is a lot of hours, a lot of effort, and they even adjusted to some triple E challenges with their practice time. So they've had their fair share of challenges to overcome, including right now is, at least I know, Rockford High School is preparing to go to Nationals, and they are doing all of that practice in the thirty-degree weather and the snow. So with that, congratulations to those marching bands, so thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Real quick, has the staff received a request from the airport CEO to come for a special order of business, or?
We're going to.
Are you, I'm just wondering.
I have not, but I will make sure we do if...
Yeah, I'd like to get...
Ten minutes.
Oh.
Ten minutes. Just a reminder. When we get them, ten minutes.
Yeah, thanks.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes, and I just want to congratulate Wayman Britt on our Boy Scouts of America honoring Wayman Britt that now that we have a campsite on the Boy Scouts of America, the modular tents where they will be sleeping, that section has been named after Wayman Britt, and just having the chance to be there at the groundbreaking and talking to a lot of the people that are associated with Boy Scouts of America, they're so appreciative of all the work Wayman has did with raising money for the Boy Scouts and all the volunteering. And I'm telling you to be out there and see the groundbreaking in the section that's named after Wayman Britt, one of few people still alive with something named after him out there. I said, I said...
You didn't have to give millions.
There is a trophy.
Don't die. Don't die on us.
They would have, but it's a huge, it's a huge accomplishment, and it's just a huge of just the work we see staff do here, but even after they leave here, what they're doing in the community and the time that they're dedicating to our youth and children. Just want to congratulate Wayman Britt on a job well done with our Boy Scouts of America.
Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. In keeping with Monday, November eleventh, and Veterans Day, there will be a parade downtown beginning at seven o'clock and ending with a short ceremony at Veterans Memorial.
Good.
Statue, Veterans Memorial Park.
Any other miscellaneous today? All right, seeing none, I just have a couple things. I want to congratulate, or thank our staff, and Administrator Britt and I went to Lansing last Wednesday to advocate for the WMPC. Senator McGregor held a hearing, and it was our opportunity to, again, talk about how important this is, talk about all the, all the great data they have to prove what a better model this is, and to try to really expand it through the rest of the state instead of vetoing it. So we really pushed pretty hard. I know that everybody's asking us, what are we doing to advocate? And I just want our board to know that, you know, Wayman and Lori and PAA and our whole team are out there talking, and yes, they're talking to all sides. They're talking to the governor's office. They met with the governor's office. They've been meeting with Democrat senators, Republican senators, House members. So I just wanted to be crystal clear to everyone that we're literally doing all we know to do. If anyone has any other ideas, please proceed, but I don't think it's, what I'm feeling is it's not a, it's not a veto on the merits of programs, it's literally just kind of a political thing, and so we've got to weather that storm, and hopefully they'll figure it out soon. But I just wanted everyone to understand the efforts that have been made by the county on that behalf. And then just remind everyone, our next meeting is not the fourth Thursday, it'll be the third on November twenty-first, and we do have executive committee at seven thirty. With that, I'll call in Commissioner Womack for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, substitute to call here on Thursday, November twenty-first, 2019, eight thirty a.m. for an official meeting.
Moved by Commissioner Womack, support by Commissioner Morgan. All in favor, say aye. Aye. We're adjourned.
I am Kent County.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.
Ami Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
Mas era Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
Oh, yeah.